Um, can everyone see my screen?
Hey.
Can everyone hear my voice?
I hear you.
Okay, so I'm assuming. My screen is very small? Okay, uh, when I, uh, I can make my screen bigger by going like this. But whenever I get ready to, um, show one of the worksheets, I will, uh. Yeah, these are just. So, um, today's class, we're gonna start as we normally do by raising the ark. Um, let's go to raising of the ark real quick. I wanna make sure we do that first. We're gonna start with raising the ark and then we'll go from there. Does anybody? Uh, let's not allow recording, yes. Um, I don't know if you guys can see this little bar thing here, but I can see it. Um, I'm moving it, it's like, uh, the, it's, it's the, uh, the zone. Uh, toolbar has like mute on there and stop video. Um, I don't know if y'all can see that, but I can see it, it's in my way, but, um, I'm going to allow somebody to try and read the raising of the ark to open the class up. Any volunteer? My side is real.
I'll try.
Okay.
Yah, 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 kuma Yahua. We are fuso. Oh, yeah, veika. We are nusu. Mi sanaika. Mi paneika.
Well, that's very good. Um, somebody else, we usually do it three times, so let's get another volunteer.
I will try.
Okay.
Kuma Yahua. Ve afusu oi veika. Ve anusu mi paneika, mi paneika.
All right, one last time, uh, let's get somebody else. Mister Clayvon or anybody wanna try?
Clayvon is a sister.
Oh, I'm sorry, Clayvon is a sister, okay. Sorry about that. Uh, any? Would you like to try to read the, the opening of the raising of the ark?
I'm not very good at recognizing all of them.
Okay, that's okay, that's okay. I'm going to read it and I'm going to highlight it as I read it, or maybe if you can see my cursor here, I'll put my cursor over it. All right, so here we have the cough makes a K sound, right? And then this next to it is the shuduk. And the shuduk makes the U sound, like food or good, like or long U sound. So we have. And then we have ma, this is ma.
Yeah.
Yahua, this is one of our sight words here, Yahua. This is the, the tetragamatan or the name of the mosai. As we know it in Hebrew, kuma Yahua. They, go ahead.
Kuma, yeah.
Kuma Yahua, ismim. They are fuso. What? This, this, uh, vav with the shiva underneath it.
Yeah.
Is, uh, the word and A and D.
Yeah.
So whenever you see this in front of a word, you automatically know it means and, okay? They are fuso. Oh, now remember, the aleph is silent.
Yeah.
This little thing underneath the aleph is called a cancellation and we're gonna ignore that. But this little purple dot at the top is the cholam. And cholam makes the O sound, so because the aleph is silent, all we do is pronounce the O. So we have O, then we have E. Veika, veika. They are fuso oi veika.
Oh, yeah, fuso, they, they.
It's not, oi veika.
Oh, in very.
There you go. Make sure you get all the syllables, oi veika.
Oh, he, yeah. Thank you, you make it sound so easy.
It's, well, you know, we hear it all the time and we kinda try to recite it for the oration memory, but when you can see the different syllables, it kinda makes a little bit more sense. And so that's what we try to do, we try to make, make sense.
Yeah.
Then we have ve, ya, nu, su. See, the, the thing about the nikud and the letters is this. Sometimes the, the vowel will be underneath the letter. As in these first few words, these first few letters. And sometimes, as with the case of shuduk, the vowel will be next to the, the letter. And so, once you're able to identify what the nikud. All it is is information, it's, it's an instruction, it's telling you what it wants to hear. Or what it wants to sound like. And so, once you can identify the different or the various nikud, then you can start to kinda decode some of the Hebrew. So here we have ve, ya, fu, su, oi veika. Ve ya nu su. Mi sanaika. Mi paneika. And I, I have this written down somewhere, I'll have to find it. But, um, it, it would do us a, uh, uh, it would do us a service if we look at this and we, we remember the syllables and we practice breaking down the syllables, okay? Because that is literally how you read Hebrew, is just you're looking at the, the, the consonants and you have to understand or you have to be able to identify the vowels. The same way in English, you gotta identify the A and the E and the I. In Hebrew, you look at the consonants and you have to be able to determine which letters are consonants and which letters are being used as vowels, and that's how you can read the Hebrew. And sometimes I read Hebrew and I just, I don't know what I'm reading. But I know how to read it. You understand? So, uh, let's see what else I wanna, this is from the last lesson. Uh, I think everybody has this, uh, lesson, but this is from lesson one, you should have this one as well.
Yeah.
We had talked about some of the, uh, letter identification, identifying certain letters. If you have your phone or if you need to screenshot this, um, I'll make sure it's in the chat as well. Because, yes.
Think I'm all right. Um, going back to the last phrase you just read through, um. I just wanted to know, um, what exactly did that say?
Okay, so let's talk about some things that, uh, not the whole thing, okay? Let's talk about some things in particular. All right, let's first deal with what we can recognize. Okay?
Yeah.
So, one thing recognized is this word here, oi veika. You see, I, I have it highlighted. This word, mi sanaika, and this last word, mi paneika, what is one thing y'all have in common?
Well. Ending. Cough Sophie.
Right, so the calf Sophie is this la, here, right? Whenever the calf, whenever the calf appears at the end of a word, it always takes on this form that has a tail that goes below the staff. Right? The staff is like that blue line on a sheet of notebook paper that you write on, you write your letters on. The staff is that blue line, so whenever the calf letter appears at the end of a word, it falls below the staff. So, when you see this calf Sophie with the kah, the masculine is gonna be a ka. If it was feminine, it would have this shiva underneath it right here. Whenever you see that at the end of a word, you have to understand that what it is, the, the information that it is giving you is, this is the my or me. Right? The my or me, and it can also be your based on masculine or feminine. My or me and your masculine and feminine. Now, my, me, if I say mine, there is no feminine form of my or me. But there is a masculine form and a feminine form of your, okay? And because of that, we have to have these, um, the calf, the, the kamats here, this little T-shaped symbol tells you it's male because in this understanding, Yahua is male. So, he is saying, your enemies. Right? Your enemies, cause this calf Sophie is saying the enemies that belong to you. Right? And here you have, uh, mi sanaika is like that, that hate you, right? That hate you. Right? Now, are, are Yah's enemies?
Yes, kidding.
Yah has more than one enemy, correct?
Hmm.
So when you have more than one, the suffix that you use in English. For instance, if you have one dog, it's doge. How do you write more than one dog?
With an S.
With an S. So in English, you understand that in cases of nouns, if you have more than one of those things, you put in, you put an S on it. That little child is a screamer. Um, you put an S on it. So in Hebrew, when you have plural, you put the shuduk on it, or this is really gonna be the, uh, suffix for anachnu. I really wanna go to a, a sheet of paper to write this down, so you can see it, but I, I, I'll get to that in a second. I'll show you what I mean. So, we have the calf Sophie, calf Sophie, that tells you, we're talking about your, right, your enemies, your, uh, that hate you, right, the hate that, that they give to you. And then, pani at the bottom here is like, uh, your face, it translates to your face. And so this is your face because of the calf Sophie and the kamats. So your, your enemies, right? They give you hate, or they hate you, your hate and your face. And then we have here, these two verbs are, or these two nouns are plural, right? We have, uh, they are fuso and let them, right? And then we have, they are nusu, also has the same ending on it. So we know that this is talking about multiple different people. So, rise up or take action Yahua and let your enemies be scattered. And let them that hate you flee from before your face. Rise up y'all, or take, rise up meaning take action, right? We've all heard that word, that song, kumbaya, right? Kumbaya, and it's not come by here as somebody translated it, I don't know who translated it to come by here. But kumbaya is the same root as we have right here, kuma. Which means rise up. Take action on our behalf. Kuma Yahua, rise up and take action on our behalf, Yahua. And let your enemies be scattered. And let them that hate thee, or let them that give thee hate flee from before thee, or flee from your face. Remove themselves from your face. And that is from Numbers chapter thirty-six. Um, that's gonna be here.
Numbers ten.
Numbers ten thirty-five, this now. Uh, numbers ten, and we're gonna go down to verse thirty-five. All right. And it came to pass, when the ark was set forth, that Moses said, rise up Yahua and let thine enemies be scattered. Let's break it down a bit more, let's look at it. So that Moses said, kum, or kuma, kuma Yahua. It says, and let thine enemies. Right? And let thine enemies, see how, uh, thine is telling who the enemies they are. We have that calf Sophie, so when we know who's enemies. And then we have here, that is more than one enemy, that, uh, they are fuso means more than one. That ending is a plural ending, which is how you do the anachnu. And I'm gonna show you a chart in a second, so you can see it, right? And let thine enemies be scattered. Uh, they are fuso, right? The scattering of thine enemies. Uh, they are nusu and let them, see, them is plural, and so we gotta make it plural, me of them. And let them that hate thee, mi sanaika, and here's the word for hate. Sane, right? Sane means, let's break it down. Sane means to hate or to be hateful. Sane. Sane means to be hateful. And then flee. They are fuso, they are nusu, right? Mi paneika, panim, panim is your, your face, panim. Or, let me see, panaim, panim, right? Is, uh, from before your presence or before your face. So when, when, when your mom just got out of my face, she could say, um, they are fuso, mi panim, right? Get out of my face. Panim is like flee from before me, remove yourself from my face. And that is from, um, Numbers chapter ten, verse thirty-five. Moses said, rise up and let thine enemies be scattered and let them that hate thee flee from before thee. Let me go ahead and show you the chart here, it should be here somewhere. Let's see. There are a lot of things in here, so bear with me. I wanna find the here we go. So this is the, these are, these are the, the suffix endings, right? IPP stands for independent personal pronouns. And there are ten independent personal pronouns in Hebrew. How many independent personal pronouns are there in Hebrew?
Ten.
There are ten independent personal pronouns in Hebrew. So here are the, here are the independent personal pronouns. It's a tongue twister, right? My or me or I. Right? I, my and me, your masculine. You see the kamats with the, uh, I'm sorry, the calf Sophie with the kamats. Uh, your masculine. Your feminine. His.
Mm-hmm.
Right? All right.
Is that a while? Or colon, that's colon, slika, colon.
Colon, yes, colon, um. Yeah, uh, say like this, with, with, with a, with a, like a K sound, colon.
Colon.
Yeah, it's hard to say, um, sometimes what I do is I just say with an H, colon. If you, if you can't say the scratchy throat thing, look, we've, we've been, we've, the first thing they took from us was our language. So, I understand if you have a hard time, uh, saying some of these sounds, so, um, I just say, colon. You know? So we have, hold on, we have the, that's gonna be his. With her is gonna be the hay. And you'll see, uh, hers he, he is who and hers he.
Think I know.
Yes.
Uh, will this doc, would this be available? Uh, will you share this?
Yes, I will share this. And, and what this was, was a worksheet that I gave my students, right? So this word here, you see in the example with the nikud, this word is seus, which is how you say horse. All right? And so if you say my horse, you gotta take this shuduk right here, put it under this semet, and then you add the U to the end of it. If you wanna say your horse, masculine singular, you gotta take this shiva and put it under this, uh, semet, and then take the calf Sophie with this kamats and put it at the end. So basically, all you're doing is you're transferring the information in the suffix column and you're attaching it to the end of the information in the example column. Now, when you have our or we, we is anachnu or our is anachnu, right? And, um, so for our, you always have this um, this nu right here, right? Like Eloheinu, our Elohim.
Mm-hmm.
Ba'itenu, our house. Right? Rabenu, our teacher. Uh, then we have your, or this is like your, or in Spanish you might say you are, right? It's plural, it's the plural your, and it's gonna be just like the your masculine plural, my masculine singular, right? Remember, this calf Sophie is the same letter as this calf. Don't let the form of the letter confuse you, but, but it, cause it's the same letter as this calf Sophie, they just took on different forms because of the final character rule. So, your or you are, this is you masculine, this is you are masculine, this is you feminine and this is you are feminine, plural. One is plural, one is singular. Then we have their and their, I'm sorry, their masculine and their, uh, feminine, their or they are, right? The plural there. So, I will, I will share this, um, in, in, in the, uh, in the chat.
Toda.
And, and, and there is this, there is this rule of uh, direct object and indirect object. So you wouldn't say, for instance, if I was to say, I love you, I wouldn't say, ani, hava, atah, right? Because ani and atah are I and you, but they are direct object, I and you. You would have to say, ani, atah, ani, hava ot, ka, right? There's a different form of IPPs for the indirect object and it gets really confusing. Um, I do talk about it, um, and, and like when, when I give my classes because you gotta know the indirect object form, but, uh, i- it's, it's just confusing for now, it's, it's too much to try to talk about. Um, but just know that there is a direct object and an indirect object. Um, and like I say before, you know, trying to explain these things to English speakers about the English language, it gets confusing. And so you can, you can understand the trouble of trying to explain it to English speakers in Hebrew. So, uh, it gets more confusing than it, it has to be. Um. So that is, uh, that's, that's good for that, let's go into, um. This is another type of verb conjugation that you guys will see in Hebrew, right? So we have, I see, right? Ro e. Right? Ro e is going to be masculine singular. What is the next one?
You, uh.
Ro a.
Ro a, which is going to be feminine singular. What is the next one?
Ro e.
Ro e, right? This ro e is the same as this ro e. Now watch this, I'm, 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 I'm gonna change. I told you, I don't like using certain fonts, right? I'm gonna change this font column all the way down, I wanna change it to, um, Times New Roman. Maybe it, it looks a little friendlier with Times New Roman. Um, because someone, sometimes these fonts can be really, can make things tricky, you know?
That helps.
It helps a little bit, yeah, I mean, the fonts. Imagine going to Israel and, and you're seeing all these different billboards or signs from companies and businesses and they have all different kinds of fonts. Some of it is in scripts or cursive Hebrew, some of it is, I mean, just, it gets confusing. But I like Times New Roman, this is more like the calligraphy, ancient, um, fonts of Hebrew. So, ro e is I see masculine singular. Ro a is I see feminine singular. You see is masculine singular. Ro a again is you see feminine singular. He sees is ro e. She sees is ro a. Right? We see is ro im. Masculine, this is gonna be masculine plural. Ro im. And then we have, how would you say this one?
Oh, ot.
There you go. Ro ot, feminine plural. Ro ot, and you only use feminine plural when everybody that sees is fem, is female. If there's one male, then you have to say ro im. Ro im. All right, you all see is ro im. Masculine plural, you all see masculine feminine is ro ot, again. They see is ro im, they all see masculine feminine, feminine plural is ro ot, okay? To see is very easy um, verb. Now I'm gonna write this right here. This is gonna be the, what you would call the pal verbs, right? The pal verb family. And the pal verbs are very simple verbs when you are trying to conjugate. And they make up about seventy to eighty percent of all the Hebrew words. So, um, what you should do if you want to learn Hebrew and you kinda rely on memorization, you don't wanna try to remember, memorize a lot of stuff. You can go over the pal verb family because for the most part, all of the verbs will conjugate very simple like this. And see, I wrote all these down, I see, I see, you see, you see, he sees, she sees, we see, we see. But I can really just run it once because these, all these answers repeat, you know? Ro e, ro e, ro e, ro e, then ro im, ro im, ro im, ro im, very simple. Um, it's not always the case. Every verb does not do that, but a lot of verbs do. Does everybody understand?
Hey, toda.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna go here, Pialim in Hebrew means verse. Pialim means verse, this is the website here, Pialim dot com. And you can write it in English, Pialim. I like this website, because it gives you a Hebrew, uh, keyboard. Just in case you don't have your own Hebrew keyboard. Okay?
With, with Nicud?
Uh, it does not do Nicud, no ma'am.
We get one with Nicud.
Um, so if I were to type with the Nicud in here. Uh, uh, let me just show you, let me just show you, I don't wanna spoil it, so, let's go with Ro. Um, uh, I missed all that. Let's go with. Roah. Right, we already know that means to see. Now watch this. Results. Click on the word to see the forms, so we have Roah, let's go with just Roah, cause I'm gonna start with masculine. Um, so we'll click on Roah, now look, here's why I like Pialim. You, you need the Nicud, it gives you the Nicud when it gives you the answers. So, leer, ots. Leer ots. We know that this is the root, the, uh, this here is called the infinitive form, or the, the to be form, right? The to be form. Right, the to be form is the infinitive form, and that is where you get the, um. The root in all the conjugations, right, is the to be form. Right, so we have Roah, Roah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have leer ots, leer ots. And remember, right here on the race. We have the Shiva underneath the race, and what the Shiva means is, this is one syllable. And this is this, and this here is the second syllable.
Alright.
Whenever the Shiva appears under the second letter of a word, it is indicating a salatic break. That was one of my rules, whenever the Shiva appears under the second letter of a word. It is indicating that there's a syllable right there, it wants you to stop talking, take a breath, and then say the next part. So we have leer ots, leer ots. Alright, now, Pialim also gives you the verb family of the verb. And I told you, the Pao verbs represent about seventy to eighty percent of all of the verbs and words in Hebrew. So if you are familiar with the Pao, you can speak Hebrew for the most part. Now, there are, there are six other verb families. Hip file, PL. But to, I mean, they, they get real confusing. And in those verb families, the rules change from word to word. For the most part, in the Pao family, you can apply the same rules to all the verbs. That way you don't gotta memorize two different rules, or three or four different rules for one verb family. Memorize one set of rules, and that should apply to most of the verbs in the Pao family, makes it very simple. Now. Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, so, so, so see is. There, oh, you say it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's to see. So you know how, uh. Right, the, the word right is. Okay, to right is see soul. Correct?
Why, why, why don't we, why don't we go to it and see?
Okay.
Alright, how, how do you spell, how do you spell right? Ta. Alright, let's see. Katav is he wrote or to write, so let's click on, let's click on this one here, okay?
Okay.
And we have, here's the conjugation of Katav, we have.
So what I'm asking is, I've been trying to figure out, is there some type of pattern, like you have? Uh, like, it takes like a portion of the word, like, uh, lick growth. So, there's a bear, it takes a portion of that word when you put that two on there, and I've been trying to see, you know, I'm a male person. I've been looking for patterns.
Yeah.
And to see if it was, to see if maybe you have seen maybe a pattern to help us. I guess conjugate this verb or see that pattern.
Yes, so, so let's look at it like this, let's look at the Pao verse, okay? I want us to stay in Pao verse, and I want, I want you to notice some things here, okay? Let's see what we can notice, let me do this, I'm going to, I'm gonna pull this up in another window, can you guys still see my computer screen? Alright, I'm gonna go Roah, cause we know that's Pao verse, okay? I'm gonna click on Roah. Right, now let's see if I can. Um, let's see if I can do it like this. Move this over. Bear with me one second, guys, alright, can you go, can you all still see my screen? You see two screens now I'm, I'm, I'm dealing with?
No, it's too large to see two, I think, for me. Let's see one.
Which one do you, which one do you see?
Conjugation of lick toe. Mm-hmm, it's, it's enlarged, so maybe that's.
Okay, let me see, this is, new share, I wanna share. Let's do it like this. What about now?
Two screens.
You see two screens? Does everybody see two screens? You see, you see leer ots on the left, and you see leak toes on the right? Okay, that's great.
Can you, uh, like minimize the, the, like your face a little bit?
You wanna see my face? I don't know how to minimize my face, over there.
It's just that the word is covered up for me, I don't know, I'm on my phone, so I don't know if it's covered up.
Okay.
Oh, I can move you, I moved you, slick eye, I'm slick eye, everybody.
Yeah, wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that you, uh, are getting what you need. Alright, so we're looking at, we're looking at similarities, okay? This is the same thing that I do for my students that are from Honduras. When they first come to class, remember I told you I'm a, I'm a multilingual instructor, right? And I give them words like cat, bat, sat, pat, rat, so on and so forth. And I ask them, what pattern do you see? So we're looking for similarities in these words, alright? So, the, the, the first, the first similarity we see is they have this lamed. In the beginning, right? The lamed is the infinitive word two, TO, two, that's why they call it the to be form, or the to form. It is the infinitive. Alright, the next thing we've noticed that both of these verbs are in the same family of all verbs. Alright, all, every last one of the Pao verbs is a three-letter root. There are no Pao verbs that are, that are two-letter roots, or that are four-letter roots, they're all three-letter roots. Alright, and this is like the most ancient form of all of the. Uh, verb families in Hebrew, this is where, it, 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 also. Uh, when you're, when, when you're saying these words, when you're saying the root. You can imagine they all make the A sound, right? So this is Ra, Ra, right, and this is Ka, Ta, right? This is where those Hebrews that say the Hebrew only has the A sound. This is where they get that from, is the Pao verb family, because the Pao verbs all have A. Alright, and another indication as to the fact that these have all A sounds is the word Pao. In the PL, all of the verbs have the E S sound, in the Pao, they all have the A A sound. In the Putsia, they have the U S sound, so the, the name of the family. Kinda gives you information about how you pronounce the root word.
Okay.
So a lot of information, you know, there's no quiz over that, I promise. But I just want you to know that we're in the Pao family, and all of these words are three-letter roots. And there's little A's between the letters, so it's Ra, and Ka, Ta, alright. The meaning of. Le- leer ots is to see, so this is the to be form, that's why you say to see. Here, we have two rights, in the to be form, leak toe is two rights, okay? Now look at this. They've kinda smushed these all together, right? I use masculine. Singular, he, it, and sees, right, so Roah is I see. You see, he sees, it sees. Roah is I feminine, and you feminine. And singular, she sees, and it sees, when it's a female it, okay? Same thing with. To write, we have I, you masculine, singular, he, it, is right. So I is Kotave, you Kotave. He Kotave, it Kotave. She is Kotaven. Right? Look at, look, look at them, plural masculine, plural feminine, same thing, so all of these. All verbs can kinda fit in these neat little, um, sections like this. Anybody have any questions about what they're saying right now, I'm gonna go really slow. Any questions about what you're saying?
No question.
This is why, I, I use Pialim a lot when I'm asking, when people ask me questions. Cause I don't know everything about Hebrew, but I have developed over the years, I've developed my own resources. Where I can go and kinda dissect things, because my first reason for learning Hebrew. Is so that I don't have to rely on John Smith, or, uh, or Schofield, or. Somebody else's interpretation of the Bible, right? I wanna be able to take the Hebrew text and break it apart on my own. So I had to learn how to create resources. So, um, we have first person singular, right? I saw is, uh. Ra, Ete, look at this. I wrote is Katav, Katavte, see how they're similar? We saw is Ra Ene, we wrote is Katavne. We have second, second person, third person. These charts are pretty much the same for all of these, uh, for all of these, um, Pao verse. They're gonna be pretty much the same for all of these, uh, Pao verse. We have. It like, it gives us second person, future tense, you will see. Let's see what it is for, uh, future tense here. The same thing, right, so whenever you see this tet, this Ta'v in the beginning of the word. You know that it's future tense.
Okay.
You see that, that Ta'v means future tense. We have the imperative form, we have the infinitive form to see literal. See that, imperative and infinitive. Now, this, this chart can sometimes be overkill, you know, it gives you so much. Information that is, it, it becomes overkill. Um, but. It's important that you know that this information is available to you, because if you wanted to. Learn all of the forms of the word, the, the verb to see. You can see all of the forms of the verb to see. And if you look at, let, 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 let's look at this right here, we're in future tense, third person, future tense. Future tense, third person, future, I'm looking at from right to left. The first word here, it has a tet in the. The first word here has a tet, I mean, it has a Ta'v in the beginning of the word, and then it has a you'd. And then it has a Ta'v and a you, right? So the masculine uses the you, the feminine uses the Ta'v. In third person future, you go over here to third person future of to see, and the same rule applies. The masculine uses the you, the feminine uses the Ta'v. This is why I'm saying the all verbs all kinda have the same rules. In the first person, future tense, first person, the ma- the singular has the. Olive in the beginning, and the, the plural has the noon in the beginning. Same is true of first person future of this one, the, the singular has the olive in the beginning. And the plural has noon in the beginning. So the Pao verbs kinda all fit into this. Uh, into this rule. Anybody have any questions about what, what they're saying?
No.
You don't gotta memorize all of this, I'm just showing you that these things exist so that you can. Um, find the resources you need when you want to try to conjugate or break down some words. So let's do this, I'm gonna go. Yes.
Okay, so the screen that you have up right there. Okay, so when I was saying that, I was looking for some type of pattern, and I don't know if this was for. All of these verbs. Uh, okay, you see how Katav is, uh. Cough, tet, five. No, 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 don't, don't move the screen, I need the, the length of that. To go from Katav, to get the word leak toe. You, you simply add a U between. The tet and the.
So, 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 look at these two, look at these two words here, we have leer ots, we have leak toes. Now I want you to examine their root word, okay, their root letters. Now, to get from the root form to the infinitive form, you gotta do two things. You add the lammit to the beginning, and you add the vav between the last two letters.
Is that a pattern, does that always happen, or is that most of the time?
Okay, so watch this, I'm gonna go to a different word, I'm gonna go to. Let's do Corre. Cool, uh, I keep misspelling it. Corre. Alright, now let's see what we noticed about Corre, this is to read, right? Now, we've noticed that Corre is all verb, correct? Notice that the root is cough, race, and olive. We noticed that the infinitive has the vav between the last two letters and the lammit in the beginning. Right? And then look at this, we noticed that it looks the same as the, uh. To see and to write. Corre means to call and to read. So yes, the pattern is, we look, we look at the future tense, first person. Future tense, first person, remember the uh, the singular had the olive in the game, the plural had the noon. Same pattern applies for this one.
Okay, so is there also a pattern with the pronunciation of that um two forms, like leek tov, leek tov? Uh, what is it, le- uh, led out there? Is there some type of pronunciation with it? Okay, I'm, and I'm sorry y'all if I'm taking up a lot of time.
No, 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 apologize. Um, those questions are important, and my answer to that last question is this. If the niku is provided, always defer to the niku. Okay? If the niku is provided, without the niku, my pronunciation will be off. And I don't speak Hebrew enough with the native Hebrew speakers. I don't read Hebrew enough, I don't listen to music in Hebrew, or read books, or listen to newsreels in Hebrew. I have nobody on Facebook talking to me in Hebrew. So I'm only a few steps ahead of you all as far as reading and understanding Hebrew goes. So I struggle with Hebrew when there is no niku. So I, I always defer to the niku.
Okay.
Okay?
Let's say that, shout out for that, Aki, that, that helps me a lot, I was, I, I had, I needed to see it side by side.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, so I'm gonna leave Yeah, I'm gonna leave the uh the Pahal to see up here, okay? And I wanna go over a few more words, okay? Um, keep in mind, and, and somebody maybe, i- if somebody has a pen and paper with them, do me a favor and write these down for me, okay? I want you to get your paper, get your pen, and I want you to write down, we're, we're, we're making a list. I want you to write down, to see, I want you to, to write down, to read. Um, to write. Um, let's go with another um verb, um. Second?
To hear.
To hear, what is, what is to hear in Hebrew?
I don't know, how far I thought you were gonna stop, stop saying something. Oh, to drink is uh, so, so saying, so saying.
Yeah, okay.
To hear has something to do with schma.
Yeah, schma, so let's go with schma. I'm gonna leave to see on the, on the left side, to see uh leer ort, because that was the first one we did. I'm gonna leave that there so that on the right side, we can compare every verb to our, our principal verb, okay, our, uh, what, what do they call it, the uh, the, the, the static verb, okay? To hear is schma, right to hear, or be heard. I'm going to click on it here. Let's see, it's a Pahal verb, correct? Uh, here's the roots. You add the vav between the last two letters, you put the lamet on the beginning, and you have leash, me- leash moa, leash moa. Leash moa, the reason why I have leash moa is because the lamet has the, the sheen underneath it, that's lee. And then we know that the shiva is telling us to stop and break this syllable up right here. This she is sheen because the dot is over the le- the right shoulder. If the dot was over the left shoulder, it would be an S sound and not an SH sound. But because the dot is over the right, it is the SH sound, so we have leash. Mo, that's holam vav, leash mo. And then we gotta pronounce this, patak, ah, leash moa. Leash moa, leash moa. Everybody say leash moa.
Leash moa.
And so um whoever's keeping the list for us, would you include this to our list? To hear or to listen? Um, and then we, we, we looked at um the
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's about the sh- shiva. Those, those two dots. When the two dots are under the first letter, that means you break after the first letter?
No, ma'am, when the two dots are under the first letter, wh- what that means is you need to blend all the letters together.
Okay, the first two and the third one?
Yes, ma'am, see, as you can see here.
Okay, I got it, I got it, that's all I, that's all I need. And if it's under the second one, you blend the first two and you break for after that, that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And now, now, look at this here, whenever you have two shivas, like in this word, let's pronounce this one here. This is yeesh. Man. Myself, man. Ooh, leash meo, leash meo, they were here. Leash meo, so those that's, yeah, that's, that's okay, that's okay. Um, but, but these two words here have that shiva, and look, let's see, this is future tense, third person, watch this, future tense, third person. Okay, they didn't, they didn't repeat that, but that's okay, I was trying to say there was a pattern, but it's not. So look at this here, they have, you have the two shivas together.
The third?
And then you have two shivas that are separate here, this word here is this word here is pronounced tish. Anna, tish maana. Tish maana. And that A is red, cause that A is where you put the emphasis. You see those red letters, that's where you put the emphasis, tish mana. Okay?
We'll hear.
You, I mean, uh, what I, what I'd like for you all to do is, this next week, get onto Pialine and just explore different um explore different ver- uh verbs, maybe um the person who's writing the list for us, maybe you can put these on the, the, the WhatsApp group. So that we have them and we know, a- and let's just commit to learning ten different verbs that we use regularly, right? Um, we talked about to drink, right? What is drink? I know drink is shote, right? Drink is shote. Alright, let's see what to drink is, okay? Alright, so we have leash tote. It's a Pahal verb. You put the lamet here and then, and the vav between there to make the infinitive form from the root. Um, and the same rules apply.
Would you go, Slika?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I wanted to see that the root was how it was derived, and it's the sheen, the tet, and the hay. Sheen, tet, hay, and they dropped the wow, okay?
Yeah.
For my notes.
No problem, no problem, no problem. So we have to see, to hear, to read, to write, to drink. Um, do you, you wanna go some more, I wanna see?
I'm lost on that again, looking at it. They added a hay, and there's no hay in leash tote.
Right, there is no hay in leer ort either.
I guess it's just the way they make the root, three letters.
Yes, ma'am. Now watch this, i- if I go back to another verb, let's see, there's a hay in this word behind us. There is no hay in this infinitive form of leash toe, but there is a hay in the root. Same with this Pahal verb, um leer ort, no hay, but there is a hay in the root. Let's go back and see, there's the same rules apply for the other verb. Here we have uh shote, or that's the same thing, let's go back a little bit more. Alright, so we have, it's different for um it's different for to hear, right? Cause they have the olive I in, and they have the I in there. Let's go back a little more and see what's different, if, if, if anything happens. Alright, so this one here, they have the olive and they have the olive, alright? So that was a good observation, right? Some of those Pahal verbs, they drop more letters than uh others, right?
Okay.
But, but, but it's good that you're trying to recognize patterns. It's good that you're trying to recognize patterns. There's a sister in the kingdom, her name is uh Tahelia. And she has a few videos on verbs that I'm going to share with you guys. And she was one that really helped me uh with finding patterns.
Okay.
Okay? Let's move forward a little bit, I wanna get one more verb at least, well, let's do two more verbs, right? Uh, to like, what is, what is like?
Yes, or like.
Oh hey, right?
Oh hey.
Or to love, ahava, oh hey. So let's see what the oh hey is, it is a Pahal verb. You add the, it's a le, eh, le eh hov, le eh hov, le eh hov. Right, you add the lamet to the beginning, the vav in the middle, the last two letters. Um, and the same rules pretty much fly. Okay, so one last thing I wanna show you, and then we're gonna do something else, okay? Take a break, and we'll do something else. Well, now watch this. Let's say I'm looking at this verb, and this is the example here, leleche, right? Leleche. I'm gonna use this verb, but it's very hard because it's a two letter root. And even though I told you there were no two letter roots in Pahal, there are two letter, there's always an exception to the rules, okay? So leleche means, I'm sorry, lelech means to go. Alright, look at this. It is very different from the other Pahal verbs, and it is only, it has a three letter root. Right, but it looks a little different when you conjugate it. Okay? But it does have a three letter root, and you're gonna see this three letter root when we go down to conjugate, cause right, it's holech. So that hay, that, that hay appears in the root and not in the infinitive form, but then it appears in all the other forms, you see the hay everywhere. Alright? And this is, like, I wanna go to the store, right? Um, so I is ani, right? Want is roset. Rosette is another one that will be, I'm gonna change this now, we know that this is gonna stay the same. Watch this, roset, R-O-zati, hey. Rosette, this is um another Pahal verb, and we're gonna, we can, I just got to to want, and this is roset. So you can say, ani roset, I want ani roset. Leleche, right? I want to go bechanu to the store. Ani roset. Leleche, bechanu. Right? I, ani, want roset to go leleche. To the store, bechanu. Ani roset leleche bechanu. I want to go to the store. Um, okay, so, real quick. The person who was writing down the, the, the list of verbs for us, can you uh tell us what the verbs are again?
To see, to read, to write, to hear. We also have to listen, to want, to like or love, to drink.
And we're gonna include this last one here, to go.
To go, alright.
Okay, so that's nine. That, that's, that is a plenty, that's, that is plenty of information for us to work on for this next couple of weeks, okay? Um, we usually do ten, but hey, what's, what's nine versus ten, right? Um, that is, you, you'll have plenty to say and plenty to do with that over the next couple of weeks, I guarantee you. And so let's see, let's see, let's see, I wanna, I'm gonna close out of this, I'm gonna go here. Let's see if I can find. Okay. Now, I'm going to forewarn you that this is not something that I had planned, okay? I just pulled this up from a different class that might have been slightly more advanced than where we are right now. Notice that there are no niku on these words here, okay? But we're going to see how well we do with this, okay? I just wanna see how, how much we can do. Alright. Maybe I need to zoom in some more. Alright, can everybody see my screen?
I see.
Can you see the Hebrew column at least? Okay, okay. So this is, this chapter was called forming basic sentences, right? So we know, or let me just say it like this, this is, can somebody say this word? That I highlighted?
He lived. He lived.
Hi, Yelid.
Hi, Yelid. Hi, Yelid.
Hi, Yelid, okay.
Right, this, this here would be a root word, right? I mean, a, a sight word, we have a boy, right? I yell it, and so whenever you have, and this, this goes into like recognition of Hebrew words and decoding, right? You would see this, you would see the root word here that I'm highlighting in red. The root word is in red, or, or the sight word, I was saying, the sight word, not the root word. The sight word is in red, and then that hay in the beginning is called a phrenomenal prefix. And the phrenomenal prefix is something that attaches to the sight word that changes the state of the word. So if I said uh in the store, I could say bechanu. If I say the store or to the store, I might say lechanu, right? So you, you can, you'll, you'll see that some words will have things attached to the beginning of the word, some words will have things attached to the end of the word, and that changes the state or the nature of the word. So we have. Hi Yelid. Oh hell. Hi Yelid, oh hell. And if you wanted to write some Niku on here, you could, you could put a Niku here, right? You could put that holam vav. On this one if you wanted to. Like, uh. Yeah, it'll be like this, let me see. There we go. Oh hell, like that. I yell it, oh hell. Right? The boy is eating and that is. That is, this word here, oh hell. Is eat. Eats. And. Eating in the gerund, right, form of the word. Gerund is another English word. If you are, when we, when I'm teaching. Uh, he English to mine, Spanish speakers, there's a, a, a type of word called a gerund. And the very, the easy way to understand what a gerund is, the gerund i- is basically the. I N G words, right? If you can include an I N G on it. Bringing, sitting, eating, sleeping, all those things. Those are the gerunds, okay? So, um. Oh hell is, I am ready to eat, oh hell. Uh, he eats every day. Oh hell, we are eating, oh no, not we are eating, I am eating, oh hell, right? I- if it was we are eating, it would be a nachnu, oh clean. And that's, that's really what I want to go over. Let, let me uh, let's do it like this, watch this. I'm gonna go to. Let's do word. I'm gonna go to word. I'm gonna go to. You probably can't see my screen just yet. I'm gonna share my screen. New share. Oh, you guys can see my screen, can't you? Okay, alright. So. Let's go back to this. Copy and I'm gonna go to word. Alright. I'm, I'm making this as we're speaking, okay? So just bear with me, please. Alright. And then I'm gonna make this a little bigger. So we can see it. Where is my? Tech, there we go. Alright. So here we have, oh hell. I wanna make this time Roman. Alright. Alright, so if this, if oh hell is, I eat. Eats and eating, then what is? What do you think we are eating is? What is we? Anachnu, okay? We have, ah. Nah. What do you think, what do you think is next?
You all.
Anybody? I heard you say, I'm just, I'm not a. I, I'm not acknowledging or denying, I'm not confirming or denying what you're saying.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so let's see. Okay, so we have. Oh hell. I missed out there. That's ten. I always do that. Give me one second. It's gonna be the other hell, oh hell, like this. Oh hell, like that's to eat. Now watch this. It's a power verb, alright? We are eating. We are eating, oh clean, see that? Anachnu, oh clean. Let me just do it. Let me, let me do it a different way, cause uh. I wanna. Pace without. One minute. There we go. Anachnu. Oh clean. We are eating. Okay, so before I go to the next one, right? Uh, wh- what about if? The, the we are feminine, how would you say it?
Quote.
And uh, who else? Anybody else have a different opinion? Different idea? Anachnu or close, we are eating. Hey, you missing, you missing, you missed out there, bro, I can't say enough. Anachnu or close. What about? If I were to say, I'm let, I'm letting you look at it now, okay? Um, what if I said? Like, we, we will eat.
No clue. That's like a command form. Is it like an infinitive form?
Well, what if I said we will eat tomorrow? Tomorrow is mahar. Okay, so this. Let, let, let's try like this, right? You almost, you, 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 you're there. No, don't, don't. Okay, well, I'll say, look, uh, let's see. Uh, nah, nu. Then there's something else right there, how are we gonna eat? And then we have. Mahar. We will eat tomorrow. And so what, what goes in there for we will eat? And I say it's our women.
It's all women, okay? That looks strange. I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna give you the answer. Alright, look at this. Here you have plural, right? Masculine column. Feminine column. When it's neither masculine or feminine, what happens? It goes in the middle. Alright, so we will eat. Yes. So this is what would go. Right here. I gotta format this better, cause it's the. There we go. Look at that, anachnu. Nochav, mahar, we will eat tomorrow. I know, I know it can, it can get kinda confusing, right? But I, I want you to, I want you this week, I want you to practice. Using that Pyleen chart for these verbs. So that we can uh. Start to make some sentences. Okay? We are eating, anachnu or clean, or anachnu or close. Alright? Um, we will eat tomorrow. And you don't even need the. You don't even need the anachnu. That's, that's really a strenuous. Because no, 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 nohav is we will eat. Yeah, so right now you're saying we, we will eat, you know what I'm saying? You don't really need the anachnu. Now, this goes into that whole American, African-American slang, right? Where you don't say, are you doing? You just say, you good? Right? And it goes into the slang, right? How we, the same way we, we. Exclude words when we talk in slang is how you do it in Hebrew. And that's, that's a residue of, of the, the Hebrew nature of our thought or our thinking process.
Uh, yeah, cause I noticed for us, we talk about say love, say love.
Yeah. And, and because we speak English and try to speak proper English, we want a word-for-word translation. And there is no word-for-word translation because. English is an inferior language. Okay, it's, it's eight o'clock right now and uh, I know we always do like a two-hour lesson. Um, I just. I, I wanna make sure we, we get the, the vocabulary words now. Okay, um, let's see if there's anything else that I really want to go over. Um, I, I'll share this.
I got a quick question.
Okay.
Um, how long do you think if we continue to study at this pace? Will it take us to become? Fluidly conversational where we can understand it. You know, we can write it and we don't have to know every word, but we can get around. Uh, in a. In the land.
So what I have found is this. That the answer to that is indeterminable for, for, for one reason. The reason why I can't give you an answer to that question is because. People have a different degree of. Consistency, learning how to read the Niku. If everybody here was. Familiar with the Niku. If, if everybody here could, eh, what I mean by that is this, if I were to go to. Let me just do it. If I were to go to, uh, this prayer right here. Um, and see these prayers here, what this is, I give you the answers, I'm not gonna give you the answers, but I give you this prayer. And I tell you, I want you to read this prayer to me. If, if everybody. Could sound out this prayer without any help. And could get it at, you know, seventy, seventy-five percent accuracy. I would say we have good foundation of the Niku. I don't have to go over the words, I mean, the letter recognition. Now, if we were all at that point, Israel, to answer your question. If we started right now in August first and I gave you guys a ten verbs to studying. We could be speaking to each other in Hebrew by, probably by Christmas. Because those ten verbs are what we call high-frequency verbs. The reason why you know what shalom, shalom is, and leethro, is because you use that in every conversation. That's the first level of conversation. Or the first layer. Think about it like a cake. The first layer of the cake is the salutation. The second layer of the cake. Or the second layer of the conversation. Is call something else. I forget what it's called. My, my mind is slipping, right? But that second layer of the cake is. How are you doing today? Or what are you up to? Or did you hear about this? So once you get past the repetition of the salutation, when you go into the second layer of the cake, now we gotta go into what that means, how you say that? Ma, at. Osah hayan, how are you doing today? Or ma atah osay hayan, how are you doing today? Masculine and feminine. And then you have to learn how to respond to that, cause if I say shalom, shalom, you know how to respond to it. Shalom, shalom, oh, shalom, shalom, maslam ka, mitzya yon, maslamay, kova sela, okay? Ma taosay hayan. How are you doing today? Okay, you know, toes, you know? Hayan, it's hot today, okay? Kane, Kane, you know? How do you say it's very hot? You say hamgadore, right? Yeah, the hot is big, it's really hot. So you just have to learn the different layers of the conversation. Think about the kind of conversations you have with people. Or call somebody on the phone and say, hey, we're gonna have a conversation and I'm gonna record our conversation. So that I can go back and. Transcribe this conversation in Hebrew. And then we're gonna practice saying the beginnings of these sentences. What else do I need to know? How are you today? Oh, I'm doing good. What about you? Are you going to the store? You know, you gotta, you have to, you have to know how to build your conversations. And, and, and that's kinda how I teach the Hebrew, right? We go over some, some high-frequency verbs. Things you always say, I'm going to the store, I need this, I want that. I have this, I saw, I heard. And we just gotta start building onto those layers of the conversation. Uh, wh- what happens for my students sometimes is this. I'll give them a sheet of paper and I'll tell them to write a story and they have to write it in English. And what happens is they will use every English word, they, they use all the English they have, they know. And then it goes from things that make sense to now they're struggling, so they just start listing all the English words they know. And then eventually they switch back over into Spanish. So we have to start building on, how do you say this? How do you say that? What are the different ways you could say this? You know, and you, you put these words up in your house, you know? I'm sitting in a chair, how do you say that in Hebrew? I'm at my computer, how do you say that in Hebrew? I'm about to cook, how do you say that in Hebrew? And you have to start making for yourself. Uh, a bank of words. And things that are going to help you fill out those conversations. But that's a long answer to your question, but uh, if. Let's give it four months. Yeah, four months. It's, it's August now, August, September, October, November. By the end of November, going into December, Christmas break. You know, when, when, when you're getting, when you're opening up your Christmas gifts, Israel. And we know you still celebrate Christmas.
I know you'll be over here.
When, when you're, yes, we'll, we'll be, we'll be speaking in Hebrew. But yeah, but look, you, seriously, you just gotta, you just gotta find what it is you wanna say. And then just learn how to say it. And it's, it's, it's memorization until it's not. When, when you first started. When you first started speaking Hebrew and somebody says shalom, that might have been very easy to say, but. What about leethro or, or, or maslam ka? You get to, you get to have somebody break it down for you and you memorize it. And you struggle with it, or you, you would say, how are you? I mean, I mean, I mean, you know, this, then after a while. Because you keep saying it to everybody you see. You say it a hundred times, now you got it. And, and the, the, the more you have in your repertoire, see, that's what they call language acquisition. In order to acquire it, you have to use it. And because you don't use it, you don't have it. And so we just give you things you can use. And I give you tools to really. Um, do your own research. Right? Cause it's just, it's, it's too much for me to try to say everything. Um, it's too much for me to try to say everything. Um. When we are. Doing class, I'm looking for. Where we are. Like, like, look at this, this is, now, like I say, we, we usually do two hours. And by the end of the class, I know your, your brains are kinda spry and everything, so I'm just showing you. So I'm just showing you some stuff for the future that just goes to why we learn Hebrew. Look at this. Your waitress, Tiana, is having a very stressful day. The food you order is extra spicy, and you would like some milk to cool your tongue. Tiana is obviously extremely busy. And she is shooting past you on a mission for another patron at a table near you. Politely interrupt her and ask her for some milk to drink. Now, first, first things first, let me, um, let let me let me switch this over into Times New Roman.
That's from memory.
Yeah.
And and that's from memory, like, I wouldn't know that in Hebrew, I just know that from.
Right, yeah, but but cuz you've been, you've had the opportunity to go to Israel and you've had the, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want you to get the answer, cuz I know you're you're a star student, Israel. But uh, I I wanna see e- everybody else struggle with it for a second, and then I'll let you give the answer, okay?
Had a little bit more experience, that don't mean I'm a star.
So remember, Tiana, Tiana, Tiana is frustrated and she is passing your table and you need some milk. Remember, this is conversational Hebrew, we're in Israel for the first time, we're eating in a restaurant. There's a lot of pepper in your food or spice, and you want something to cool your tongue. So you gotta, we have to be polite, in in English, you would say, excuse me, may I have some milk, please? So let's look at this, we have Sneaka. Right? So we see, we see Sneaka in all of these, so all of these are polite interruptions, right? Sneaka, excuse me. Bevakisha. And we see Bevakisha at the, at the back of all these phrases, all these statements. So we know we're saying please and thank you, right? Sneaka and Bevakisha. So these, these are all polite, so you don't gotta worry about it being polite. But we're trying to figure out what these, what we're saying. We should know kori, right, korei. That was one of the words we did today, korei.
I don't remember.
Yeah, how are you called? Right, remember, korei is to read or to call, remember? See, look at this. What is this?
I'll call you.
Yeah, what should, what do, what do you call? That's not it either. Give me one second. I have. Okay, um, I don't know where it is anymore. But anyway, it was korei, right, korei or leek roth. Leek tot, right, to call or to to read. So Sneaka, excuse me. What is your name, please? That is, oh, what do you call, please? Right? Then we have Sneaka.
How much, how many, how much, comma?
Right, comma zele, how much is this? Then we have Sneaka.
Where is the toilet, please?
Yes. And the last one is Sneaka. This is it, right here, the answer. Excuse me, can I have some milk, please? Laqabell, afshel laqabell halav.
Kalav, that's what I missed.
And it's more of an H than a K, right, so halav. There you go, Sneaka, afshel laqabell halav, Bevakisha. And then, so once you, once you were able to dissect these based on the 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 sight words, right, cuz all of these are sight words, then it says here, translate the other responses in the spaces provided. Right, so now that you've figured out the right answer, now you gotta translate the other ones into their correction, into their English, right? So this is just, like I say, this is not an assignment for us right now, I'm just showing you that in order for you to speak Hebrew, you have to start building your conversations. And and normally what we, what I did with my first class is, it was four of us, and we paired off every week I was working with, um, and you can kinda see, uh, this is from the from the class, right? Um, I was paired off with Quintasia one week, and she uh, and I built conversations about how she liked school. And we sat there, we were on the phone, and we recorded ourselves talking about her favorite subject in school. And then her brother, Kenta, and her their uncle, who was the one who got me into class. His name was Shamaya. Kenta and Shamaya, they had a conversation about the sports Kenta liked to play. And they recorded themselves having that conversation. And then that week, we went home and we transcribed that into English, and then we started to break it down in Hebrew. And then the next week, we shared what we learned about those two conversations in Hebrew. And then we switched partners and we do the same thing again. And we started, we're having a conversation, I think I talked to Kenta about um, what he wants to do when he grows up. And he talks, and we recorded that conversation. Uh, Shamaya and uh Quintasia, they talked about her favorite car or something like that, I can't remember so much, her favorite TV show was what it was. And we, they they recorded that conversation, and then we broke it down in English. We we we, I mean, we transcribed it into English, we broke it down in Hebrew, and then the next week we came back, we shared what we learned. And we just kept switching off like that for a few weeks until we were able to build conversations in different subjects about us. And and that's something that you have to do when you are trying to learn Hebrew. Cuz you just don't have the words in your repertoire, you gotta just record yourself, transcribe it and start finding out what those words mean. And if they had any, if they had any trouble, they would call me during the week and say, hey, I'm trying to say this, is this the right way to say it? You understand? So, and then after that, they had a, they they got a little course certificate, they, I printed it out on some cotton paper. You know, and they have these to this day, they can, they can say, hey, I went through the basic conversation Hebrew course, and I got, uh, uh, I mean, we made it a whole little course, you know? So, um, I'm gonna share some things this week on the uh, on the WhatsApp group that might give you some help, like some sight words and things of that nature. Um, and maybe this week, I would say, take it upon yourself to call one person and have a conversation with him. And then start working on transcribing that into English or dissecting that into Hebrew, so you can start building your conversations. And I'm gonna do the same thing, and we'll talk about the different layers of conversation. Because I think, I think before we can read the Bible, I think a lot of us just really wanna be conversational Hebrew. Reading the Bible is great, but being conversational is another, is a whole other thing, is, that is a whole different kind of victory than reading Hebrew Bible. Are there any questions for me? Anything else you guys wanna talk about?
I was having some trouble with wow, yud and wow at the end of some words, I'm trying to find a particular word in reading.
You were having some trouble with the end of it?
Pronouncing it, yes, when yud and wow, wow were together. Um, I wasn't paying attention, I think, to the Nicu. Uh, there was one word in particular ended with yud and wow. I'm trying to find it real quick. I've seen it in different places in the Tanakh and the Torah. And it always, I I have trouble pronouncing the word. Okay, Torah Exodus seven sixteen. It's olive, lama, yud and wow.
Okay, give me one second, I'm gonna pull it up real quick.
And I'll tell you what the Nicu are under.
You said Exodus?
Seven sixteen, if I got that right.
Well, let me see, let's see. Exodus seven and sixteen.
Yes.
And which word is it now?
Olive. Lama, yud. And wow.
Yes. So, we have a la, a love. A love, right? Let's see what this, let's see what this says.
Strong's H four thirteen. Ale. Ale. Construct L. L.
Okay, that's, that was the root, that was not the right word. So we have so, so I'm, I'm, let me, let me show you what I, how I, how I do some research, right? So when I have a word I did that I don't know what it, what it is, I'm going to highlight it, copy. I'm gonna put it into this conjugation table. Right? And I'm gonna see what this tells me. A love.
A love. Okay.
And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna click on it here so we can see what it uh.
Can I ask a question? The, the vav. Does it ever make the W sound?
Let let me show you something. Go, go ahead, keep, keep talking.
The reason I'm asking is because it's kinda like let's say the, the, you know, Moriah told us that most of the letters in Hebrew, whatever their name is, they kinda make that sound. Does that make sense? So, if we, if if we're calling it, oh, a wow, wa, what are you calling it, uh, Nilo?
Wow.
A wow. Okay, if it's called a wow, then subliminally, we're looking for that wo sound. Do you understand what I'm saying? So, it it would kinda confuse me. I don't know if it would confuse you, because if I were trying, and I would see that and it makes, it doesn't make the wo sound, it's always the ve, the V sound, the v, v. And the, or the, what is it, the O or the U? And what other sound does it make?
Yeah, I mean, you're right, the U sound, O sound, and the, and the H sound. So look at this. You have Yahwa, right? And you can, you can say Yah. Then wa right there, right, Yahwa.
Okay, so that's the sound right there for the wa, wa.
Right here, it makes the O sound, Yah, ho. Here, it makes Yah, ho, shua, it makes an O sound again. Uh, yeah, it makes O and U to start, and and together, right, O and U sound together, O and U right there. So, um, noon, right, it makes a U sound. So, I don't know of very many instances where right, we have the divine salutation, right? Uh, where it makes the V sound. Leahtrov. Um, soros, nasi kov, right? So, I don't know of any I don't know of many places where it makes the, where it makes the U sound. Um, there is another one here that I have somewhere, um, where it, I'm saying, um, what's it called, Yah, Yahwa, Yahwa. Um, but it doesn't make a, a, a wa sound there either. Um, so I'm not really sure, you know, what's or why, or how that W sound came about. But, I know that in 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 Latin-based languages, you have the ve and then the W is literally the double V or the dubla ve, right? And that's why we say double U. Right? So, that might yeah, so it gets confusing.
Um, so we would need the Nicu to know how to read that.
Yes.
On the end of the word.
Yes, I would say yes. And and then, once you're familiar with more Hebrew, you start to recognize it for what it is. But it's very, what the vav is, I I call it a vav. Um, the vav is the most uh complex letter in all of the Hebrew.
Now, it depends on the teacher, the Moray or the Morah. Also, because when I was under, uh, attending classes with Kohen Mikael Ben Levy in Trinidad, not Trinidad, he's in, um, Tayana.
Yeah, Ghana.
He, he uses wa. When I listen to some of the Jewish people, they often pronounce v.
Yeah. Cuz they're German.
But I understand that the letter is there, it's either vav or wa.
Yeah.
So, it depends on the company you keep, maybe, but.
Yeah, a- a- and you know, that's something that I say, look, we need to really maybe talk to somebody that is a lot more authoritative than I am on it, cuz I just, I mean, I really just don't know.
Answer was excellent.
Yeah, oh, well, I appreciate it, I appreciate it, but uh if we, if we wanna get a fuller understanding, I'm sure there's one to be had out there somewhere in the Hebrew world. Um, I talked to uh a guy here named Artio a lot, and he is fluent in Hebrew. And he's a, he's not a good teacher, he says, but when I talk to him, boy, I sure get a lot of understanding from him. So, um, but anyway, I I I do appreciate everyone for sticking around for class. Uh, the time is well spent. Um, we can go ahead and end the class here. And um, we, I I will start putting out, working on, putting out the uh, the worksheets on the WhatsApp group. Uh, any more pressing questions, anything that you ladies wanna talk about before we end the call?
You said something about vocabulary words, were there any particular vocabulary words or just the, the nine?
So, in addition to the nine uh verbs that we, that we talked about, uh, I'm I'm hoping that you're gonna put those verbs on, uh, you can put them just in English, put them on the WhatsApp group. And I'm gonna put a list of sight words.
Yes, I dare.
And these are words that you should be able to recognize on sight, right? And uh, so between the the sight words and the nine verbs, we have plenty to start working on building our conversations. And uh, so between the the sight words and the nine verbs, we have plenty to start working on building our conversations. Alright, uh, let me close out. Um, now it's, now it's.
Hallelujah.
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 Hallelujah. Selah.
Selah. Tode raba.
Alright, y'all have a good evening.